Okay, we will, it's like we're live on Facebook and we'll be getting started really soon. Wait for the Colonel to come back on.
I mean, I mean.
Okay, it looks like he's here. Okay, we had you Colonel, just waiting.
Yeah, yeah, we're going, we're good.
Okay, welcome everybody, welcome everybody to the. Welcome everybody to the Portsmouth Coffee Talks Evening Edition. I'm sorry, has something going on in my earphones here, earplugs. Welcome to the Portsmouth Coffee Talks Evening Edition, Thursday, it's the 2nd of June. Here we started a new month since we're on here Monday. But here we are tonight and we're gonna continue our conversation that we had last Thursday. Cause talking about the actions of the Portsmouth City Council and first I guess Colonel you can start out with your disclaimer and if you wanna lead off the conversation, you feel free to do so.
Can I lead off with the prayer that just popped up on my phone? I mean, the Bible verse is just, once he does the disclaimer, but the Bible verse just popped up on my phone.
Okay, the views listed on it stated on this program are the host and if we had a guest, there would be the guest or whoever we cite and who pops up on us and not of Facebook or any other organization, it's just us. Go ahead.
And I ask that because you know, I do, I do a morning prayer and I do an evening prayer. And I say, how appropriate that this scripture came up on my phone just before James Overton came on, 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 on the Zoom page and it's Proverbs 15 and 27. The New Living Translation says greed brings grief to the whole family. But those who hate bribes will live. Amen and amen. I mean, how appropriate, how appropriate would that be to pop up just at this time with the discussion that we plan to have on today? I just wanted to share that and thank you for allowing me.
Well, thank you. I watched the, as they say, the show last week. And in spite of the attempts by the fearsome foursome to try to tone it down and to push their agenda through to get their pick person out without discussion and just to ramrod this, the old police chief into a job that she probably isn't, she is a nice person. Which I don't know her personally. But it's probably no more qualified to run the city than some of the guys I know on, that I see walking the streets on Airline Boulevard. Now that I've said that, you can.
I have to step in and say that we, we don't know that because she hadn't gone through the process and we don't know what qualifications she has.
I thought about, if you look at qualifications, yes, you have been a police chief. But that is not qualified you to run a city, it's not fair.
But my point is, we don't know what her resume has on her resume, what she has on her resume. Yeah, so we can't just say she's not qualified, you know, especially comparing to somebody on the street. Because she could very well, if she was a part of the process, very well be qualified to be city manager, but we don't know that.
If, if, I, I would seriously doubt it if she stood up and stacked up against in a legitimate process to look at for a city manager.
That might be true, that might be true.
I, I would bet, I would say 99.9% is chance. I know you want to defend her, but I would say 99% of the chance that she is not there now.
I'm not, saying that. I'm not defending her, I'm just saying, we don't know if she's not qualified, that's the only point I'm making.
Uh, we, I say, how's that? And then so, uh.
Well, let me throw something in here while you all are debating who, who's qualified, who's not qualified. I took this time to look up what skills do professional local government management bring to the city? And the typical qualifications, are they listed for those who are taking on this position? They say typically, now they're not in all cases, now this is typically. Managers often begin their careers in policy or administrative positions, budget or management analysts. And then serve as assistant manager before becoming a full manager. City, town and county managers also come from a variety of professional backgrounds. Ranging from director planning to director finance to employment with the state federal government. Many of the managers surveyed indicated that they had the position of assistant manager prior to assuming their current CAO position. Most appointed local government managers are members of ICMA and bound by an ethical code which commits members to a set of ethical standards of honesty and integrity that go beyond those required by the law. So that's according to the list of what they look for in a manager. So, you know, she, she had some experience in running the, the Portsmouth Police Office. But I, I would need to know what her skills were as far as managing the budget. Knowing how to adequately serve the citizens with the budget, making sure everything is distributed as it should be distributed. I love Tanya, I enjoy working with her when she was a police chief. But I think it would have been incumbent upon our, those four, if they had at least let the public see what her resume was.
Yes.
And if they had allowed them to see what the resume was, maybe it would not have gone the way that it had gone.
Well, saying that, and then so that is a, that description is somebody who had come up and checked all the blocks to be a, to have the bandwidth to be a city manager. Uh, yes, she has been excess successful in the line of law enforcement up and down the chain. And she's probably managed a budget for, you know, whatever police department she had had all the way up and down the chain in that. But being a city manager requires more than. And so when she was the city, when she was the police chief here, I still have, and they said she was all that in successful, but being fired, uh, she allowed uh, people in her chain to sue sitting, uh, to arrest and sue the sitting Senate pro temp in the state of Virginia. Well, I mean, he, well, I'm not gonna say his name. He, she allowed some people in the police department to go rogue on some of the city officials. And we all know, uh, when they had Black Lives Banner and in the, in the, in the, when they tore down the statue downtown.
But that, but, but that wasn't under her watch, Black Lives Matters was under Chief Green's watch.
Yes, but didn't clean up and get rid of the guy that was, has a long history of being antithetical to African-American politicians within the city of Portsmouth. That's where I go, you didn't do it then when you had the power to do it and you wanted.
From what I understand.
That is why I go, yes.
From what I understand.
Wait, wait, wait Slim, and when you talk about government, either in the state, city, or even in the federal government. What happens on your watch, you're still responsible for, if it happened at a previous watch, you're still responsible for. Because you have a responsibility to clean up the mess. So answer, to answer your question about it happened during Green's time. But when you had, when you had the gavel, you didn't do nothing to get rid of these jokers. And they cited in the, in the, in the discussion, that small discussion, that she tried to clean up this, the police department downtown in her time. I have to see, uh, the effects of that, the results of that, but I don't see it. Okay, what say you?
From what I understand, she, she was going in there cleaning up there, she had fired, released some people that Chief Green brought back. So it was in the process and it might have been one of the things that led to her firing in the first place. She was rallying up the good old boys that were in the system. When she was fired, from what I understand and anybody can, can verify or correct me, please, that watching, that she tried to to clean that up and, and whoever she let go, Chief Green brought him back because she didn't feel like they were justified in that. And, and the last thing I'll say, well, what Leah led with, we should have led with that, talking about the qualifications. And then that would have been, whatever, that would have, that would have been more proper to leave with what the qualifications were of the city manager and then carried on the conversation, so.
Yeah.
But, and it's, it wasn't like I was trying to be competitive with the Colonel.
No, it's not competitive, it's just a discussion. But here's the other piece to that, is you spent all, or the city, the city spent all this money vetting all these applicants to hire the last city manager, what happened to that list? Why don't you go back and look at that list and get the number two person? Or if Tanya is so great, put her stuff up and put her back into the mix and put her against the other known people that you already vetted, so she can be vetted also. I, the, the bones I have is, is you're trying to do a handpicked name and from, uh, the fearsome foursome that smells wrong. And so I look, if it smells wrong, what have they done and what kind of communication they've had with the person they want to pick?
Yeah, and that was the point, that was the point we made last week. Go back through the same process and let anybody coming up qualify like Angel Jones qualified. And that was, that was the whole thing, which is, looks like this, that's what's gonna happen, didn't, they, if they didn't have that fourth vote to turn on them, to flip on, they would have, they would have gotten it through. They would have got through and she would have been city manager because that's what it takes and they're the ones that hired, so. Let's talk about, let's talk about that process because. Um. It turns out to be all, excuse me Colonel, what'd you say?
Yeah, it's a process that I, I don't like, it smells.
Uh huh, yeah, as far as the process, process as far as the way the charter goes.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's correct and a lot of politicians, a lot of people candidates run on, all I need is four, four votes to get things done. And that's true in a lot of cases, but to, to use that kind of leverage to ramrod things, you know, it's not fair. You need four votes to make sure you do proper, get proper policies that are in the best interest of the whole city. Now whether that was something that was in the best interest of the whole city, we don't know because the process wasn't followed properly.
And James, if they thought that it was in the best interest of the city, they should not have been fearful to bring it before the other three council members, to at least let them know what they were planning and who they were planning to bring. If they felt it was right for the city, you don't silence your audience so that your, your public can't speak on what you've done. So you know, if, if, if it's, if it's good for the city, go through the process, don't do it behind closed doors, you know. Step forth, if you feel, if you felt good about what it is you're doing, then you should avoid it before the rest of the members of the council first. Secondly, you should avoid it before the public, let the public know what it is you're doing and why you're doing it. They have yet to explain why they fired Angel Jones. They have yet to explain why they wanted to hire Tanya. They have given no explanations to talk about crime. Crime has been a part of this city for a long time. And Angel Jones could not have changed things around in less than a year's time. It would just wasn't gonna happen and you can't blame her, let me change, you can't blame her, I'm sorry. If you are not out there doing something as well, to show up, to be on camera when somebody's been killed, that's not helping the crime situation in Portsmouth, it's not helping it at all. So what plans, what plans did you bring to the table to correct the, the crime situation of Portsmouth? What did you bring to the table besides brow beating someone else about what they're not doing? And apparently she was doing something, she was trying, she was trying.
Yeah, it was crazy to circumvent a process that you were afforded when they brought Angel Jones in. It took them about six months to decide on that and they were all involved in that process. And when it came down to it, they, they, they had their candidates and the majority had theirs and Angel Jones went out. But they had to opt to the same process and then they come back and want to skip that process, you know, for another candidate. Which, uh, didn't make sense to me.
And James, the public is, the public is saying, publicly saying, well, we know they didn't want Angel Jones. It's just one, one of the four flipped, that's how Angel Jones came in. So the public's perception is that this was a plan in the making all along. They were planning what would be the best time for us, the foursome, to come together and remove this lady from her job. You know, but I think about one thing, Angel Jones, so she's a woman of God and she says she's gonna be okay. You know, and I think about the fact that God put people in positions for a reason. You know, when you think about all of the people who sat down on the bus before Rosa Parks sat down on the bus. But they couldn't use them as the catalyst for the movement because of the character of the individuals who were there. So they couldn't use them, that 16-year-old girl who was pregnant, she never would have stirred up the community to come to, to fight against what was going on with the busing in Montgomery, Alabama. But when Rosa, a lady of statues, sat down, they were able to gather the public together. And I think the same thing happened with Angel. Angel Jones, I think, was placed here to make the people of Portsmouth wake up and look at what's taking place in your city. I have never seen anything that governize whites, blacks, women, men, as this situation has governedized people in the city of Portsmouth.
Yes, and I think behind the closed doors, there's a lot of corruption going on and behind it with the four horsemen. And, uh, it's gonna come out sooner than later. Sooner than later, because.
Eric, Eric Perryman says, I like Chapman too, but I'm wondering if she was so good as a police chief, why hasn't, why haven't she been able to land another chief job? That tells me she wasn't that good, that's just me, that's Eric Perryman, who asked that question, who's made that statement, as a matter of fact.
Yes.
And, and Claudia, Carla Goodrich Man says, economic development starts with working the planning and zoning department, city managers must understand uh, general dynamics for infrastructure and how it is zoned economically. Portsmouth has a black population, has been constituents of gentrification. Resolutions for this city must address crime and economic device like. Thank you, Carla, Carla, Carla Goodrich Man.
Mm-hmm. So saying what you said in the previous segment, when you talked about the overall qualifications. I still go back to say, yes, she has been a successful up in, in that arena for law enforcement. And I don't believe, and without looking at her resume, I'd say 99.9% that the other pieces of the puzzle are, are, are not there. Uh, you can be a successful, uh, city manager by having overall understanding of, of how to run departments and, and leading people. But if I fire you and then the next thing I do is I want to bring you back for the lead job and over everybody else that I've already vetted, is either the people that vetted before, uh, they're the dregs of the earth and I don't know them. But there's something wrong with the process. I would go back and I would advise the city council is go back to the original list that the taxpayers paid for. Not them, the taxpayers paid for. And you either put her back into the process and let her compete against those folks. And then you let the winner come out.
I can agree with that.
Not about, not this, not this thing that I think the vice says, he just wants to throw, I wanna give her $200,000, like it's his money. It's a taxpayer's money. You're throwing away, throwing money like it's, uh, it's your foundation.
But you know, one of the people on that night, I had to go and see it for myself because I couldn't, I could not fan them, what was going to take place. And one of the people made a statement, you know, cause I was saying, well, why would Tanya even want to come back to Portsmouth at this time? Until the city is cleaned up, until we get things running in order in the city. And one lady said, well, you're gonna make $200,000, that's good. And if they come back and want to fire you in six months, you're still good, cause they gotta still pay you $200,000. So you, so you win-win, either way, either way is a win-win situation for the person, you know?
And you were so correct, but if you were so good, you would have had a police job, chief's job by now, even a deputy somewhere.
But, but, let's, let's refocus our thoughts on the process. Let's refocus on the process, you know? Um.
You're correct.
The, the process, once again, if I feel good about what I'm doing, I don't mind sharing it with everyone around. Because I will be able to tell you the reasons why I'm doing what I'm doing. But if I don't feel good about the process, I'm gonna do it behind your back. And this way I don't have to explain to you what's taking place, I don't have to give you any explanations at all.
Well, in this case, I'm not doing it behind your back, I'm doing it, uh, in the darkness of a, of a room at city council. Where I've decided with my four horsemen, or my four buds, to ramrod this through. So it, it without really thought, so it smell, the whole process smells for what they're doing, so, uh, in, in saying that, corruption is worse.
And it's, and it's incumbent upon the people of Portsmouth to really research, look at who's out there, look at what they're bringing to the table. Uh, look at, look, look, as they say with Donald Trump, follow the money trail. If there's a money trail, follow the money trail, if you follow the money trail, you'll find out what's going on, follow where the dockets, where the dollars are going.
You can look at the four horsemen and follow the money trail, why they want to make this abrupt change. And I'll bet you a dollar to a donut, at least two out of three of them should land in, in, on the other side of the law.
James? James Overton?
Go ahead.
So, uh, with that, I wonder who would, who would be the investigating officer?
Is there an investigating officer?
Yeah, I wonder if it's in the preview of the, a city attorney to investigate some of the allegations that are out there against some of the members of the, uh, city council and some of the graft that they've been, uh, and shenanigans they've been pulling over the city of Portsmouth.
I don't know which arena that would fall into, so.
Yeah, and you really can't go to the state because they're, you know, you know, the Confederate, the government that have at the state. You know, you couldn't trust them to come in, so you have to have somebody that you trust. And I wonder if the city attorney could start an investigation.
Well, currently it looks to me it's time for the women to come in and take over, cause you men have just messed things up royally. And, uh, you know, I, I, I think about old Sojourner Truth, Sojourner, when she spoke at the Women's Rights Conference, she said, if the first woman God ever created was able to turn this world upside down, then surely all of the women put together should be able to write it up again. And I think that the day has come for the women, you gotta get people who will come in here, who will stand on truth, who will stand on morals. You know, who will stand on justice. Because right now, we haven't seen, we got situations where older people saying they don't want to vote for a black person and that's sad. And I'm telling them, you cannot lock all black people together, it's just that, you know, you, you really have to look at the person and look at what the person is bringing to the table before you make such a statement as that.
Yes, well, you got two, two, uh, sitting council members, I believe, are up for reelection this, this fall. It might be, I hate to say it, it is time for somebody to go home to retire. You pick off two this year and, and, and if subsequent, pick off two more.
And, and Colonel, and you have to vet every candidate. There are a lot of people out there who is running. And I mean, that's gonna dilute the vote like nothing you've ever seen before. So you better make sure that you vet each individual who has decided to put their name in the ring. Find out what they stand for, what they're bringing to the table, do they have a job? That's the most crucial question, do they have a job, you know? And hope them there.
Yes, and it's kind of funny that you mentioned do the job because I have mentioned that, uh, several times before and we, when we look at some sitting members of the council now and look at their employment status. And then if I'm an investigating officer and I've done investigations on other officers, uh, when you peel back the onion skin, there's a lot of rot under there. And I'm starting to spit, I'm starting to smell, and, and actually the citizens of Portsmouth are, are starting to smell dead meat, rotting meat. And it is time, and the only way to excise, that means cut out for those that are out there, that, that need to get the Google machine, get out there and vote, because if you don't get out and vote, this dilution, these people that are running, they dilute the vote and the rock will rise to the top and you will be stuck with the four horsemen and whoever are coming out there.
James, you're quiet.
I'm, I'm listening.
I don't like you just listening, I like your voice, huh?
So as you listen, do you come down on either side, well, actually Leah and I are talking about the same thing, so, uh, do you come on the side of the four horsemen?
I don't come down on the side of anybody, I just made the statement that, you know, let's be careful what we say, that's all I was saying. I don't.
Now that we said, it's, the, the horse is out of the barn, so, uh, what do you say of the, of the actions of the four horsemen?
I think their actions were wrong, I think their actions were wrong and I wouldn't be surprised and I can ask Leah this, she was there at the meeting and she can tell about the climate of the people there, there was people there, white, black and, uh, male, female that probably had the same sentiments.
Yes.
Maybe she can share how that, how the climate of the council is, cause usually when you go to the council, it's, it's divided on certain issues and even the way people sit is divided. But it seemed like from watching at home that night, that people were united, at least in how they felt about the process and what was going on between their eyes. And in my personal opinion, I didn't like it either, I, I think that they abusing their, their, their. And in my personal opinion, I didn't like it either, I, I think that they uh abusing their, their, their uh foreboat power. Which I said earlier, it, it should be uh used to the advantage or to the best, in the best interest of the whole city. Not to power grab, not to bring in somebody you want uh qualified or unqualified. I still think the process should be followed, uh just like it was in the first time. So yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm totally against them and I wouldn't be surprised and it, it is a grand effort now. To recall the two that are not up for re-election that, that have two more years on their, on their uh. On their terms, so uh that's telling you something man, it's, it's a real valid, and I'm not gonna say valid, it's a real big effort. To gather those names, I think they need something like eight thousand and they want to get ten thousand. Whether they get there or not, but either way it sends a message on how the people feel, how the people feel.
Say, it's saying, saying that.
James, you are so right because in that session on Thursday, Tuesday night. I've never seen the people in Portsmouth more united than I saw on that night. I never, there was no division as to where people were sitting, people were sitting together. And, and the sentiment of the, of the, of those in, in attendance, they were horrified over what was taking place. They were really horrified, it's what we say, and they, they, and, and to, and to have a city council meeting. And not allow the citizens to speak.
Yeah.
What, what do you have to hide that you don't want the citizens to speak? To, to tell how they feel about what's taking place in the city. And you know, and, and it's a shame that I got friends who are out of town who have watch parties on Tuesday night. Just to watch the Portsmouth City Council to see what's gonna take place next. And as they say, they never fail to, to give us a good show. And, and, and what, and James, and if, if it's, what is that gonna say about a bond rating? Because your bond rating can be also, not only looking at your financials, but they're looking at. If whether the city is developing and if the, if there's, if there's um, what's the word I'm trying to say? Um.
There's connection.
Internal dysfunction, is, is there any internal dysfunction going on in the city? So i- i- it can have an impact upon the bond rating as well, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, because it, it. Big companies looking to come in will reconsider, they don't want to come into a, a environment that's, that's uh, that's not. That, that won't, that might, might not help them in, in the efforts they're doing, you know, they see the infighting and the leadership and. Uh, no uh permanent city manager, I mean, what company would want to come in? So if the company is not coming, I mean, it puts everything at risk.
It does.
And I'm not sure how much it weighs uh on the bond rating, but I, I would think. That it, it would have a little something to do with uh how, how we are rated as our bond because, you know, we're more at risk.
Yeah, well, saying that, I feel sorry for the mayor. And he's been made some impassioned speeches. And if a big company came to the city of Portsmouth and says, I want to build a distributed or building or whatever, bring jobs here. And they say, uh I need the, I'd like to, normally you would say, I want, I'd like you to meet the rest of them at city council. The leadership of the city. And he, he would have to, he would have to tell them uh they're out of town or they're sick or they got COVID. So they wouldn't show up, some of those meeting, some of those folks on city council, I would say, oh, such and such got COVID, so we can't meet with them. Because it's a shame, I, you can't bring some of those, there's a couple of them out there, you can't bring out in public.
And, and also today we lost um another deputy city manager, which is Robert Moore, who is also the director of economic development. He's on, and I don't know, um Angela Allen reminded us of that, but I heard that when I was down in City Hall today, that that happened, so. Um, the issue is whether he resigned or got fired, we, we don't know that yet, but uh either way he's gone. So that's another top tier management, part of the management team that's gone.
Yeah.
And James, and as well as what you were saying earlier, also with companies coming into the city. If they see that if these three are gonna vote for me, I know that these four are not gonna vote for me. You never see them cross over, you know, uh so it doesn't make you feel good being a person who wants to bring business into the city. Say, and if you appease the mayor and Lisa and Moody, then the other four, whether it's something good for the city or not, they're gonna say, well, we don't want it. Or if, yeah, I, I mean, you just don't see any unity at all, you don't see any unity.
True, and I, I would even surmise and say you, you get a backward, a uh, a uh back channel talk to that future company. To see if I got my hands out, what can you do for me, not for the city?
Going back to the people uh speaking, you know, I, I think anybody with um, in a right frame of mind, if you're an elected official. You look out there and see all those people there, they're there for a reason. And to have them speak because you knew that um the reaction of the crowd vocally affected council members' vote.
Exactly.
They changed.
But James, but James, that's, that's, James, that's.
He said it was after talking to Lisa and, I mean, Congressman Lisa uh Lucas Burke and, and reconsidering. But I would, I would just uh think. Uh, what's the word allegedly, no, I, I don't. That that would change somebody's mind because the crowd was, you know, they didn't get a chance to speak officially, but they were speaking loudly unofficially. And it was no shutting them down and they were voicing their opinion, so uh, because I don't think he came in there. To vote the way he eventually did.
I don't think he did either.
Well, yes.
And, and what part of the process did he not understand when they had already just gone through the process with Angel Jones?
Yeah.
Is it that, is it that Lisa gave him information, you know, what made him? Turn on others, I truly think it was the people in the audience. I think, I think it can look out on that audience and see how the citizens were feeling at that moment, you know?
It goes back to an old adage, read the room. He read the room and says, my uh stay on or future in city council after this meeting, if I do what the others. Uh, the other members of the four horsemen want to do. Then my stay and my reelection is going to be short-lived. So I'm making a conscious decision, I'll throw out uh this compromise that can't be made. Of saying, what's that, fifteen June or eighteen June or whatever date they have, some ludicrous date. That they can uh placate the people saying, yes, we'll, we'll redo, relook at this till then. But there was no rhyme or reason why you can't wait until. The uh.
January, after the election. It's an after the election.
Incredible, you know, get some folks in here that can literally look at it, but there was really no discussion of. What happened to the other list? That when I vetted these other candidates. Why can't I pick out the number two, if you rank ordered everybody, I took off Tanya as the top of the list. Theoretically, because we don't know where they sit, where they stood. Go back and get the second person uh or the first, the person at the top of the list, that's how you do it. That's how we do in, in the military, you do commands that way. You got to order merit list and whoever's the top, you get the job. If that person falls out or says, I don't want, I, I decide to turn down this command or this job, I go to the number two person. He or she gets it, or the number three is we work our way down, what happened to that list? But they want to, the four horsemen want to circumvent it, reach down and get their appointed person.
And the.
And it's a long party added, added the thing, then I paid, what was that, eighty-three thousand uh severance?
The interviews of the top uh. Uh candidates. Uh, uh recorded, so they don't take it, they wanted to go back and look at. The top can, candidates, or, or they could open the process up to uh other candidates if they wanted to. Uh, it, it would have to be done in that way, in some way, to be fair. You know, um to rush into, now suppose you rushed into with, with Tanya Chapman and she, you didn't like what she did, well.
Well, she wins, she wins either way, James. They brought in a two hundred thousand dollar salary, they let her go because you don't like what she's doing, she still gets two hundred thousand dollars because you got to pay her, her contract.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and you had Vice Bear throwing to it, yeah, Vice Bear's throwing away two hundred thousand, he just knows that figure out like it's his money.
Well, it sort of takes you back to uh what, what uh Lucas Burke was saying. So what are you trying to do, take out one delta and put in another one?
How about that?
And think we're not watching, we're not, you know, the reason y'all doing that, uh another lady delta.
And, and, and Councilwoman Lucas Burke is a rock star now, she's been on Roland Martin, she's in the shade room, she's on the DL Hughley. Uh, uh, she really um has been. She, she, she brought the point, point home, I, the, the words that she used, she apologized. She apologized for the words that she used, but she did bring the point home, uh which helped to wake, wake the citizens up as well.
Well, the, the words she used got her the attention.
Exactly, exactly.
She's been saying some of that same thing for a long time, but.
Yeah.
Throw a few MFs in there and uh you'll, you'll, you'll get the attention. And that's all over, you know, we much rather have national recognition for some of the good things uh. That, and there are some good things going on in Portsmouth, especially with our people, and we'd like to have that rec, but if, if we have to. Uh, bring recognition, because sometimes you have to go national just to bring it back home.
Just to bring it back home.
Yes.
To wa- to wake folks up, you know?
Sometimes a negative can be positive. I look at the uh Confederate party out there, yeah, Representative Jordan and uh Goldbar. And some of the right wing uh nuts in the, in the Confederate party.
The pit bulls.
Headlines for, for uh being negative and saying crazy stuff. Uh. Councilman Lucas, yes, she went off and told it like it is, like, you know, she's out there, and she apologized for it. But everything she said was true. And by her standards and looked at, hey, it gotta be said, sometimes you're in the heat of battle. It could have been said in back room with the rest of, you know, when they was in there with this, but the whole part, she brought to light the uh. The process that is broken and brought to light uh the corruption of the four horsemen.
Uh, James, could you, could you answer Ara Dutton's question, can citizens call a town hall meeting with the mayor? What's his responsibility and all of this, doesn't he run the city? City is actually run by the city manager, but James, could you answer that one for her, for Ara D- Dutton please, him?
Yeah, you could have a, a town hall meeting, but it would have to include all, all the members. Uh, I mean, you can invite the mayor out to your civic league or something like that, but a town hall, official town hall. And we used to have those outside of the uh, we didn't call them town halls, what did we call, outside of the council meetings would scavenge citizens an opportunity. To address council in a, in a different way than they would in a formal council meeting. And we used to have them like every six months and I, I thought they were the best things to have because you really got a chance to listen to citizens and. All of a sudden that stopped and that stopped before COVID, it, it wasn't the COVID uh thing that stopped it. Uh, yeah, and, and I agree with you Ara, um and, and I'll say this about Ara and other people that no longer live here. We heard a lot and, and Lea, 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 you said that we had a lot from people that used to live here that are still concerned about Portsmouth. When they start getting all over the place, so they're real concerned, especially Ara and, and other people we know. And even though they can't come in and vote anymore, they still tune in and offer, you know, ask the questions, well, can we do this? So can this be done in order to help the situation? And uh. You know, yeah, I, I guess that's what it will take, but I, I don't know if that would even uh work with the present composition of the council.
Exactly. Because.
To hear the people on an issue like this. You know, I, I, I don't know what you want to hear from the citizen.
Because James, didn't they go to different communities, did they, they have a forum at Norcom High School, then they have one at Churchland High School? They would move around the city with the forums so the citizens can express their feelings as to what's taking place and, and what's happening within the city. So Ara says, Dutton says, so is the mayor's position simply symbolic? As Dr. Holly used to say when he was mayor, I am a drum major for the city of Portsmouth. I am here to bring businesses into the city and that's my job.
Yeah.
He, he does represent the city as, as um. The leader of the city and the face of this in many of, of official capacities for the city. But uh he is just like the rest of the council members, files one vote and.
One vote.
It, it's, they manage to run city and of course, uh city council can, I agree to say control, but they uh. They uh hi- hire her to do what they hired her to do and, and so often. They don't give uh, well, they definitely didn't give Angel Jones the opportunity to do what they hired her to do. You know, uh, so uh we could talk about that forever, you know, she, she's gone now and she still lives here, she bought a house here. So her intent was to live here and she, she had to know with that uh four-three vote. You know, a lot of times you look for unanimous, a seven-o vote, you know, okay, I got the confidence of the whole council, at least for now. Coming in, knowing that three of them and it's just like one more to get you out.
That's right.
And so she knew that this could happen, but she still, most, most people come in in those positions, they take about a year before they decide to. To really buy something in the city.
Exactly.
Well, I'll make sure, you know, they, they uh established in the city a little while, but she bought a home, so I, I, I believe she's gonna be here, you know? And uh she'll be fine unless something, something comes along, I don't know.
Well, one, I, I beg to differ with you because one, yes, she came here on a three-four, but she came here on a three-four. Then under a normal circumstances, if I came there as a three-four, I would have bought a home because with the rising rates and da, 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 da. It was an economic decision and she thought I was coming into a normal. Uh, organization and city that even though I came with a three-four, they wouldn't pull the shenanigans that they did. Doing, you know, in, in relieving her from her job. So uh, yes, she guessed wrong and when we use the word normal, uh she gets wrong on that.
Well, she said she came committed to the city, committed to the job, to do the best that she could do. And she knew that if four people were, uh if there was a three-four vote, she knew that it could be a three-four vote to take her out again. So she says she was prepared, she was prepared for it. And that's, that's why I say, that's why I say, that's why I say people put in positions and places for a time and for a reason. It's a reason because she woke the citizens of Portsmouth up. What happened to her woke the citizens of Portsmouth up? We might still be sleeping.
And, and he say that, and then when she used the words the other day about, uh I saw it on TV, uh working in a hostile uh environment. And I believe she did, because they, you know, they were doing everything behind the closed doors. She, I, I would, I would hire the best attorney I could get and take them to the uh, take them to the brink. That's what I would do. I would not take this sitting down. I would not take them sitting down and for the two that are running. Other, as each time the four horsemen get up, they would have a, a thorn, I'd be a thorn in their side. I keep reminding because in, in politics, in, we work in the next news cycle. City of Portsmouth. Don't forget what they're doing to you now. Because they've been doing it to you. Uh, for a long time. So your only power is what is to get out and vote and we've already talked about uh. The city of Portsmouth having one of the uh, uh lowest uh. Voting ra- uh rates in, 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 probably in the state. So we give away that power. So it's time to change.
Right, because I, I certainly.
City back.
I certainly like to see a higher percentage of people voting and whichever way that went, I would have to, and, and wasn't the way I wanted or the way I voted. I would have to be uh accepted because I know the majority of the people have spoken. But when it's twenty percent, I know that's not the majority, anywhere near the majority of people spoke, speaking. So who you have, might have in place. So who you might have in place was wasn't put there by the majority of of the people that are on the voting record. And hopefully, you know, like Leah said, it wakes some people up and and makes and sends them to the and you really gonna have to pay attention now because I think it's gonna be a long list of people running for those three seats. And seems like mood is reconsidered. I I don't know if this is official, but seems like he's reconsidered to not retire, but to rerun for his seat. I hadn't heard it from him, but I heard.
He had, he he had petitions at the meeting on Tuesday night. People were signing his, signing his petitions for him to run again. So it seems like there are about eleven or twelve folks out there who put their names out there to run. And so I'm hoping, I'm praying that the citizens will really look at all of these individuals and look at what they're bringing to the city and make sure that their purpose is there for the city and not for self gain, you know?
I do.
What would also help is those eleven people get together and says such and such. You you you're gonna pull, you are going to allow somebody to slip through. And we end up with same crap we got now.
But you know Slim, Slim, remember back in, back in Lucy Overton and Helen Davis Day, they would sit all the candidates, they would talk to each of the candidates and tell them, say, look, it's not your time, it's not your time. We can't, we can't afford to have all of you out there now. You're diluting the vote. There's no telling what we can end up with. And James, you remember Lucy Overton had a special chair in her house. You had to come and sit in that chair for her to make a decision as to whether you should run or not.
Yeah, and I think they respected her because not because she might have been rooting for a certain person, but she knew what those, what what your chances were and she was just saying, look, you don't have a chance. Family to vote for you and maybe a few of your cousins, but those who vote, somebody else will vote. And 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 I'll never advocate denying anybody the opportunity to run. You have, if you feel like you can really, but you know, if that's the case and it's eleven people out there, it's up to us as as the voting public to make sure that we vet these people on their merit, on on their platform and what you think that they can bring to the city. And look at their personalities too, it's coming down to that. Get along, you know, and and the big thing, I I remember some people running. They would say, I'm not gonna get along just to get along. Sometime in politics, you have to do that. You you have to get along, you know, and have your battles and and come to some kind of consensus. If you don't, then have it out in the public. But if you have it in the public, have a good reason to have a have it out in the public. Because you've tried it in, you know, in closed session or whatever area, you can legally do it. That way, but you know, Texas is a is a game sometime of give and take or compromise. And it's it's it can't be your way or my way when you got ninety five thousand people out there you representing.
Well, it's all about building a consensus, a consensus, and that's part of leadership. And we're not seeing that today. And so the the eleven that are allegedly running or trying to run.
And Colonel, it's gonna be more because the cutoff, I think, is not until June twenty third. So we don't know how many people would be out there running as of June twenty third.
Yes, and they need to vote.
What did they, James?
Especially after that last meeting, it's it's meetings like that that encourage a lot of people to run. I think some people probably at that meeting said, let me go downtown tomorrow and get me me a candidate package, you know, some things like that emotionally stir you up and say, man, you know, I think I can do it, you know, but sometimes you don't think it out completely to say, well, it it's either not my time or maybe I can serve better in another capacity. Maybe I don't have the leadership qualities that it would take to do this, you know. Maybe I don't, you know, it's all things you have to look at and consider. I I would look at people that that they're gonna run. You need to take six months to a year, you know, talking, talking to people, uh, talking to family members, especially family members, because you bringing all them into the to the flame. When you run for office and you, all your family members are a part of whatever happens, because they have to sit there and watch you get fried sometime, get you, they're there. When you get fried, they have to be there, so you have to talk it over with your family and then talk it over, go out and talk to citizens and then do some soul searching then yourself. Is this something that I can really do? Can I have somebody stand up and call me names? You know, and do all these things to me, do, I have the energy to be everywhere, you know, almost everywhere.
If somebody wants to run tomorrow, they pick up the packet, what what does this packet consist of?
Well, the first thing, you have to get the signatures.
Signatures of the citizens.
In a hundred and how many, twenty five, well, you wanna get more than that.
Want to get, you want to get at least two hundred and fifty signatures, because people sign your petitions and and will not tell you that they're not registered to vote. So.
Or even live in the city, they think they can, you know, but that's the most important thing. And the other one I think you fill out was the qualifications, Leah, you.
I think generally, you just have to get your signatures in. That's the main thing.
Then the rest is up to you to to convince the voters, you know, that I'm the person.
Exactly, exactly. Make sure to get set up that that financial account. You have to do, they have to have a treasurer managing and securing that money. And so there are steps to it because, you know, the first time Wood it ran, he didn't get enough signatures. That's why he couldn't run. So when they had that that open seat there, then that's when they maneuvered to bring him in as a person to fill that seat. So the second time he did get enough signatures to run, I got to give him that much. But James, as you were saying earlier, you know, Reverend Warren, whenever he prays at the Norcom Alumni Meeting, he says, let us agree to disagree, but not become disagreeable. And that's what it should be for the council as well. And and I think about what Martin Luther King said, that a genuine leader is not a searcher for consensus, but a molder of consensus. That means you're gonna talk to people and you're gonna try to convince people to move in the directions in which you want them to to move in. You're not gonna force feed them into the directions you want them to move in. So it's important that we get true leaders, individuals who've shown true leadership skills on the council and not concerned about self.
Yes.
Angela Allen says you have to sign a declaration of candidacy.
Yes.
Yeah, that's that's your pledge to, you know. That's a legal.
Legal form, yes.
Yeah. Well, I'm going down there. I got some time tomorrow. I'm gonna go pick you up once, Slim.
Well, I just, I see I was talking about, we don't need any seventy three year old council member, so I'm not quite there, but.
Ara, Ara, we're quickly, oh, was there, Ara? Don't put me down, Ara, now. Don't put me down.
I would, I would say that, you know, I I wouldn't turn you back on a lot of the seniors out here because a lot of time you you're getting experience, as long as they still have a clear mind and things like that and have the energy again, I say. Or they don't have the energy, they they surround themselves with people that can do some of the things that they need to do. But you have some seniors that could could run for office and really be beneficial to 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 the city, you know, one thing, a lot of times the seniors are more established and you have to worry about the council being their job.
Exactly, exactly.
Since you've turned down the, my jest there, so Leah, you you would have a conflict with your present position?
I have a couple of conflicts. I just, I really, I want to work for the person that I feel, and I I'm gonna vet everybody. I want to work for the person I feel who's gonna be best for the citizens of Portsmouth, because all my family and friends and and everyone. I want a better life for them in the city of Portsmouth. And I don't want my friends going on YouTube on Tuesday nights making a mockery of a city that I grew up in, that I was born in, and a city that I love and a city that I do everything in. I I want it to be a place where people will feel comfortable coming to the city and being a part of the city and feel that they will be welcomed into the city. And James, one thing we gotta get away from it is the old versus the young. When you listen to the younger people run, if they say, oh, it's us against them, it's not us against them. Because the older ones bring wisdom to the table and the younger ones bring all this knowledge that we don't have to the table. All this computerized and 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 knowing how to reach out and get to this person and get to that person. So everybody brings something to the table, so we can't base it upon whether you're old or whether you're young. But the major thing is the old and the young must come together and be willing to work together.
Yes.
That's the most important piece that we need in the city of Portsmouth.
Yes.
I I would say those two groups would need each other, you know, the the new might bring in newer approaches to to old ways and some of the old ways might be tested to the point where that's the way to go. You know, you can't just look at all old ways and say, oh, man, that's that's back in the day, but it's been working. So you might can tweak it a little bit, but you can't go completely away from from some things, something that's been working for a long time. And you and that's what the mistakes some young people make, they wanna go completely away from something that's been working because they think people are trying to monopolize something. It's not that, it's been working. And ears are open, bring us something better instead of putting us down. And say that won't work. Okay, what you got better that's gonna work better? We'll work with you on that.
Exactly.
And and you can't run, Leah, because we need you here on Portsmouth Coffee Talk.
And I love Portsmouth Coffee Talk. I wouldn't leave you off for love nor money. Do you hear me? And 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 I want to say at this time too, James, that anyone wants a blow by blow description of what took place at the city council meeting, go to Cletus' page and I don't want to get a blow by blow description, but you have a lot of humor and a lot. It 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 calms your soul when you listen to Cletus telling the story.
Also, it it feeds your mind while it's calming your soul.
Exactly.
Some of the things that you probably, your pressure might go up if somebody was telling you straightforward. But the way and the way he started out, I told you.
I told you, I told you.
He had, he has two of them on his page, so go to his page, the first one and then the second one. Each one were after a council meeting, so I think you'll thoroughly enjoy that. At the same time, you'll be informed, you'll be, get some good information. But we're kind of winding down, but as I said, Portsmouth Coffee Talk, you know, every once in a while, we're gonna come on here as hosts and and give our our opinions. But we'd like to bring on guests and hear what they have to say, and that's that's what we mainly do. But every once in a while, we do have opinions too. We do have thoughts and things that we like to share with you all, which is what we're doing here tonight and we did maybe about a week ago, and we've done it before on different issues. So you look for that to happen every once in a while, but we're gonna continue to try to bring information to you and we we're gonna try to bring candidates up here and let you see them for yourself. And we have some questions for them and hopefully, we don't wanna call them a tough question, but they 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 might be tough questions. But there'll be questions that maybe the viewing audience needs for them to answer. You know, whether they're running, whether they're incumbents, you really can question incumbents because they have a record of what they have done already and you can ask them why they did that. But the ones, we need to know them too, so we're gonna do to to get them out there along with other other things that might, other places you might be able to see them and vet them. And take the responsibility yourself to look these people up and vet them yourself, because that's also your responsibility. You know, so take all that collectively and then you you should come up with a good candidate to vote for in the if you do it right.
And James, and we must reinforce once again that these are our personal opinions, not any other sources. It's our personal thoughts through our own observations. We're speaking from what we've seen from our lens. You may have seen from your lens and you may see something totally different. But these are only our personal observations of what we saw and what we heard over the past week.
And I'll echo the same sentiment. So what I will expand it is what Slim was talking about. For the eleven declared candidates and list is still growing. Come see us. Come get on here and let us talk to you about your platforms and what you're all about, what you stand for and what you're going to do. For, and so that is the growing list of people that wanna run. For the incumbents, come on. And so for once, we can have truth in lending. And we could take the veil of secrecy off, so we can ask the questions. I promise, promise I'll be nice.
James, James, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost.
I will still do my job to.
Oh, you still do your job, Colonel, for sure.
I was gonna say, oh, his definition of nice.
I'm still asking tough questions because the tough questions have to be asked and answered. And so for those who are the incumbents that I've been tough on and still talk about you, come out and defend it, defend your record. And then so we can let the public see your actions and inactions. And let the balls drop where they're supposed to be. And for the citizens out there in the city of Portsmouth, make sure that you're registered, know how to vote, where to vote, and go back and take your city back.
Now, now, when is the last day for registration for this election? Has it already taken place? I think it has, hasn't it? Somebody come online and share with us, please.
I think it's more into the summer. I think it.
I think you got a little time to go.
We have time before the before the fall sets in, it might, might even be sometime in September, I'm not sure, but.
So please make sure that you are registered to vote. And have your proper ID and if you're one whose rights have been taken away from you, get those expunged and go ahead on and and get on there and vote. Voting is the the most crucial thing that you can do in your life. These local elections are more important. I cannot say it enough. The local elections are more important than your national election because these people determine what's happening to you from the time you're born to the time you die. You need to vote locally. Don't wait for national elections to vote. And we need you all to come out in droves and vote in November.
Yes. That is the only voice you have, the only power you have is a is a voting block. And when you, one, the Confederates don't want you to vote. They wanna take that right to vote away. But when you give it away, it's even, by not voting, it is even worse. You have today, we stand on the shoulders of those who have gone on behind, before us and fought and died for the right to vote, for us to be free. And for those who don't vote, you you spit on their graves, your your parents' graves, grandpa's and everybody and ancestors.
That's right.
By not voting, and it is crying shame. And if you don't vote, then you deserve everything that they do to you. That's all I got to say.
So Angelia said the last day to vote to register is the twen- is twenty two day, twenty two days before the general election. So you still have time to go down there and vote. And I hope that some of these organizations will get out here and 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 set up stations, set up stations to get people registered to vote.
I I know, I know what group will be out there.
The deltas. The deltas will be front and center, I am sure.
They're out there every election anyway.
Yeah, they are, they are.
As well as the rest of the Divine Nine and and other groups out there throughout the city. And as we wind down for real this time, I I if the co-hosts agree, we're gonna try to bring some citizens on to to get some of. we're gonna try to bring some citizens on to, to get some opinions. Maybe we'll pick some areas through, in, in different areas of the city. They have the city, uh, section off in, in what? Section one, two, and three or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can pick some citizens out of each one of those, uh, areas and, and just give, let them talk. You know, since the council won't let them talk, we'll let them talk.
Yes.
That sounds good, James. I like that.
I like that.
Them express themselves on camera. Uh, I think that'd be great. We'll still have our public service stories, uh, uh, you know, uh, on our morning shows and evenings as well. But, uh, I think it's important, it is so crucial here locally and, uh, nationally, you know, for us to be ready to, um, to vote. So let's bring some citizens on and let them, give them a voice.
Yes.
So if you know of someone who's out there who would like to express their opinions on what's taking place in the city, please let James, the Colonel, or myself know so that we will be prepared to bring them on, hopefully as soon as next Thursday, James. If we have some individuals.
Yeah.
If we have some individuals.
Maybe, uh, two or three people can come on at the same time.
Okay, so if you have an opinion of what's going on, let us know. Let us know who will be a good representative for your area, for your community, to share what's taking place.
Yes. Bring it on.
Yeah, let's see how that works. Next Thursday, so we'll, we'll be looking to set some people up for that. Let you, uh, do your thing.
And they don't have to hear our opinion. We want to hear their opinions, okay?
So we can beat y'all up too. No, I'm just joking. I think I just.
We're kind and gentle.
Yes.
It's just like sitting in, in the living room and we're just having a little chat with each other. So if you know of someone who'd like to share some information on their thoughts about the city of Portsmouth, please let us know. Go to my Facebook page, go to James' page, go to Portsmouth Coffee Talk's page. And Colonel, we will keep the Colonel informed as to what's coming up, right, Colonel?
I'll be ready for you.
Okay.
Early vote, early voting, uh, Miss Allen says, Smoke Allen says, starts on September twenty-third. So that's why it's so important to start doing your vetting now because if you wanna vote early and make up your mind, some people already know what they wanna do. So it's good to get out there early. And a lot of times when people vote early and people see, oh, a lot of people are voting early, that also is encouraging to other people to get out there and do something, hopefully. And, uh, I'm, I'm looking for a, a much higher rate.
I am too.
Percentage of people voting this time because, you know, we certainly gonna do our part to keep reminding you and, and, you know, beating upside the head with how important it is. You know, so till you get sick of us, but, you know, it'll be worth it for us.
That's right. And Kimberly, they will have absentee ballots, so contact your local registrar uh, to see about getting your absentee ballot. As well.
Okay.
Okay, thank everybody. And, uh, thank your co-hosts, we appreciate it. Another spirited conversation between the hosts and, um, and our participants on Facebook Live. Thank you all for chiming in and putting your statements and I hope, we couldn't get them all up there, but we got quite a few of them up there. We pass it on like we promised we would. So thanks for watching and, and responding. We really appreciate that. And you can keep on responding on her page. And, uh, we'll look at that. Somebody said, who said they enjoyed it? Miss, okay, Kimberly, thank you.
I thought you said somebody said, who enjoyed that? Well, I tell you what, um, I, I, I hope and I pray that a day will come when we can show people throughout the nation what a great city Portsmouth is. And we all unite and come together and we'll be able to share the good news of Portsmouth, Virginia. And so hopefully we can get businesses who want to come into the city so that we can buy stockings in the city, we can buy shoes in the cities, we can buy suit in the city. But we got to have a, we got to be in a better place in order for individuals to even want to come uh, to do business for the city of Portsmouth.
Yes.
Yep, starts at the top.
It does, it does. It does.
All right, everybody. Thank you. We appreciate it. And, uh, Portsmouth Coffee Talk is here for our boys.
Our future? Or did I did it wrong? Our community? I'm sorry.
The Colonel's lying.
She messed me up last week when she did that. Messed me up on Monday, you know, after you left.
Yes, yes.
It's all good.
We back to where we started. Remember how, when we first started, we couldn't get it right?
We couldn't get it right. We're back there again.
But that's okay. That's okay. They got it. They got it.
They did.
Special divorce pod. We're here for your voice.
That's right. And Ja- and James, if they have a concern, did they think it needs to be addressed? They can contact us on Portsmouth Coffee Talk page or on my Facebook page or James Overton's Facebook page.
See us in the street, you know, tap us on the shoulder.
Yes.
And, and a special thanks to everyone.
Slapping, but, uh, it's talk foods.
Uh-huh. And thanks to everyone who's, who's watching on Facebook Live.
Perfect.
Okay, guys, take care. Have a great weekend. I don't know what's going on this weekend. Leah, when is the, uh, Sea Walk? Is, do you know?
Sea Walk Festival, isn't that coming up? Um, is it this weekend or next weekend? Huh?
We got June tenth, tenth.
Juneteenth.
I think that's gonna be celebrated on the twentieth though, right?
Right, on a Monday.
Um, and I think maybe after that, the Sea Walk with combination with the, um, Norfolk.
Sea Walk, what's that? There's this, the, what, there's this, the Harbor Fest, right?
So by Monday, we'll have that information. We'll share that with the public.
Thank you all. Thank you so very much.
Your recording button's still on.
And Leah, I dare you.
Wait, 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 wait. Stop.